Good evening, welcome to our Mesa City Council meeting here on July 8th, 2025. Council members who read and go forth are unable to attend, therefore their excuse from their meeting tonight. We'll begin our meeting with an invocation by Reverend Mindy Tucker of the Unity of Mesa, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that I will lead. If you'll please stand for the prayer and allegiance. I don't see the Reverend, so we'll do a moment of silence, please. Thank you, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher, as you come forward, let's remove eight D and eight H from the consent agenda, please. With that, you can start with our consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item two, approval minutes of previous meetings as written. Item three A, Act on Liquor License Application for Quick Corner, 1107 North Mesa Drive. Item three B, Act on Liquor License Application for Quick Corner, 66 South Mesa Drive. Items three C and three D, Act on Liquor License Applications for Rochester's Family Dining and Sports Bar, 721 South Rochester. Item three E, Act on Liquor License Application for Chubby Skewers, 1955 West Guadalupe Road. Item three F, Act on Liquor License Application for the Main Street Mart, 714 East Main Street. Item three G, Act on Liquor License Application for the Salted Knot, 21 West Main Street. Item three H, Act on Liquor License Application for Paddle Pals, 4945 South 71st Street. Item four A, approving contract for Ellsworth Road Project Improvement from the South City Limits to Ray Road, construction manager at risk guaranteed maximum price number one of one. This project is funded by 2020 Street Bonds and the Transportation Fund. Item four B, approving contract for Sigma Butte Park Phase Two, construction manager at risk guaranteed maximum price number two of two. This project is funded by 2018 General Obligation Bonds through the Parks and Cultural Bond Program. Item four C, approving seven-month use of a cooperative term contract with renewal options for uplifting vehicle equipment and installation services for the Fleet Services Department. Item four D, approving three-year term contract with two-year renewal options for self-contained breathing apparatus, air equipment, parts, repairs, and maintenance for the Mesa Fire Medical Department. Item five A, approving resolution to execute the second amended and restated Joint Powers Airport Authority Agreement and the second amended and restated Intergovernmental Agreement to reflect the authority's name change to Mesa Gateway Airport Authority. Item five B, approving resolution to enter into a lease agreement with the ARM of Save the Family Foundation of Arizona for city-owned property located at 5135 East Evergreen Street, Unit 1209. Item five C has been removed from the consent agenda. Items six A and six B are for approving resolutions related to development of the Edge on Main. Six A is to vacate a portion of the right-of-way on South Morris Street located south of Main Street and north of Mahoney Avenue. Six Bs to enter into a development agreement and public access easement agreement for development of a mixed-use project generally located at the southeast corner of County Club Drive and Main Street on both sides of Morris Street. Item seven A, introduction of ordinance regarding zoning case 24-1062 for property located north of the northwest corner of West Main Street and North Beverly. Rezone of the plan area development and site plan review for multiple residence development. Item eight A, approving ordinance for proposed amendments to Chapters 30, 31, and 87 of Title 11 of the Mesa City Code pertaining to accessory dwelling units, detached accessory buildings or structures, or home occupations. Item eight B, approving ordinance for zoning case 24-548 for property located west of the southwest corner of Pecos Road and Sigma Butte Road. This is for a site plan review for development of a freight truck terminal and warehouse. Item eight C, approving ordinance for zoning case 25-163 for property located at 7561 East Baseline Road. Major site plan modification and amending condition of approval number one for zoning case 97-48 to allow for expansion of a minor vehicle service and repair use. Item eight D has been removed from the consent agenda. Item eight E, approving ordinance for annexation case 25-49, annexing county right-of-way at the intersection of Elliott Road and Hawes Road. Item eight F, approving ordinance for annexation case 25-293, annexing county right-of-way along South Sigma Butte and extending west along the future alignment of East Auto Drive. Item eight G, approving ordinance for annexation case 25-449, annexing county right-of-way for a portion of the intersection of Elliott Road and Sussman Road. Item eight H has been removed from the consent agenda. And item nine A, approving subdivision plot for Longbow Business Park and Golf Club Lot Two Repli, this is for property located west of the southwest corner of Record Road and Longbow Parkway. Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury, thank you, Ms. Duff. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously with Mr. Aradia, Ms. Goforth, absent. Thank you. All right, we'll move back to item five C. Item five C, 25-063, calling a special election to be held on November 4th. I have quite a few blue cards with those who'd like to speak, and I'm going to hold you strictly to three minutes. And I'm going to call two people at the same time, one on deck like we're playing baseball. First, we'll meet with Mr. Scott Grainger. Mr. Grainger, will you come forward with Bob Hathcock on deck?
Mayor and council, maybe if I could just remind, if I can maybe give you a little information before the public speaks, to just say that by state statute, we're not allowed to use city resources to influence the outcome of an election. And so while they can talk about the recall itself, the definition of influencing the outcome of election means supporting or opposing a candidate or effectively campaigning. And so this isn't an opportunity for people to say that they support a particular candidate or oppose somebody or to vote for somebody or not to vote somebody. But certainly people can talk about the fact that they support having the recall, or they can express frustrations with having the recall or whatever, opposition of actually having the recall. But it's not an opportunity to campaign and say you support or are going to vote for or against a particular person. So just to remind people of that as we progress through all the speakers.
Thank you for your admonishment. Mr. Grainger.
Good evening, my name is Scott Grainger. And to the council mayor and council members, my address is 4135 East Ford Avenue Circle in Mesa, Arizona, District M2. I'm speaking for myself, not as a Republican precinct captain of LD2 or as a trustee for the Summer Mesa Irrigation Water Delivery District. I have lived in Mesa for 34 years and own and operated my engineering firm, Grainger Consulting. I have run for statewide federal office and state and state senate and representative positions. I'm here today to speak against item five C and the related Resolution 25-0635. I strongly believe that Councilwoman Spillsbury should be immediately removed from office and not allowed to continue to sit and cause more grief and discontent for constituents of District Two and the city of Mesa as a whole. She has demonstrated a total disregard for District Two constituents. She's acted more than once in a total disregard of the ethics provisions of the city council. Ethics rules by acting as a liberal activist, supporting the Harris-Wall's presidential campaign and the US Senate campaign of Senator Gallego. These actions alone, as a nonpartisan member of the council, are sufficient, in my view, to have her removed, but you failed to act. In addition, she has supported the pro-trans agenda by voting to support transpositions over her constituents' expressed revolution at such ideas. As a representative of the city of Mesa to the city of Mesa School District, this is even of more great concern. She supported, voted for, the additional homeless hotel on the east side despite strong objections from her constituents. In brief summary, Councilwoman Spillsbury needs to go. Remove her from office now, do not allow her to continue her unethical and non-supportive regime of District Two. Thank you.
Mr. Hathcock, after Mr. Hathcock is Robert Taylor, Robert B. Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Bob Hathcock, I reside at 3139 East Hampton. I am here this evening as one of 3,858 qualified electors from District Two, recently certified by our county recorder. We exceeded the minimum signature requirements by 20% to activate a special recall election process. I also stand here as one of many volunteer petition circulators. I have personally met with hundreds of concerned friends and neighbors in a one-square-mile area only of Harmony Park and Sun Trails precincts. In our visits, the vast majority of people shared their feelings of betrayal, distrust, and misrepresentation from our current council representatives' voting record and untimely public endorsements. I can't tell you how many of these disoriented voters sincerely thanked me for my involvement and allowing each of them to have an individual voice toward a collective effort. Nearly all who signed were well-informed on the issues and needed no explanation for the grounds of this recall. According to a fairly recent Pew Research study, Mesa, Arizona was named as the number one most conservative city in America with a population of 250K-plus. This is a remarkable honor that makes me proud to be a third-generation Mesa citizen as well as a lifelong conservative. Now, even though our mayor and council are technically elected as nonpartisan, let's be honest, your voters know your party affiliations, as they should, and will typically vote accordingly. There's nothing more disingenuous as a politician who claims to be one thing as a candidate seeking election and then proves to be quite the opposite after securing their seat. This can be viewed as misconduct by your electors and certainly was by your Maricopa County Republican Committee. Here's the kicker, the results of your 2024 reelection would have been much different had you publicly campaigned for extreme liberal candidates before election day versus one week after securing a second term. Now, in closing, as participants in this recall effort, we have been vilified by some as having ulterior motives, being partisan extremists who don't respect the election process. We've been accused of wasting taxpayer dollars in a ruse that's not good for Mesa. We have been labeled as an outside special interest group funded with dark money. All of these accusations are false. Bottom line is the simple fact that all 3,858 verified signatures belong to very disappointed District Two constituents who reside right here in the number one most conservative large city in America. Mayor and council, we urge you to respect the will of the people regarding this special election. Please uphold the state constitution and city charter that allows for this process to take place. Please give the voters of District Two another chance now that all of the cards are on the table. Thank you.
Let's hold our applause, please, we have a lot of speakers. Mr. Taylor, and following him is Brian, is it Dilke? Okay, you're up next, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Mayor and city council, my name is Robert Taylor. I have lived here in Mesa, Arizona for 70 years. I practiced dentistry here for 30 years. I live at 3841 East Ford Avenue. I'm in District Two, I'm constituent of Julie Spillsbury, councilwoman, and I'm against her. And we're going to do everything we can to take her off and remove her from office. And what really upset me was the time that she was interviewed by a Mesa Tribune and was asked, "How do you vote and why do you vote the way you do?" She says, "I vote by my conscience." Well, I come from a country that believes in the "we, the people" and as constituents and being very conservative in that area, that's not what I voted her for. And I'd like to see her removed. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Brian, after which Mark Kimball is on deck.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I've spent my entire career working here in the city of Mesa, so I have an interest in what is happening here. I did want to point out, before I get to my main points, that all the things that Councilwoman Spillsbury is being criticized for are all actions that she engaged in prior to the election. And so the constituents have already spoken and reelected her overwhelmingly after she did the things that they are saying that constituents were being denied. And so let me get to what my main point, which is that the territorial governance in Arizona was terrible. And one reason it was terrible is because the governors who were appointed by presidents and the legislative members were all deep in the pockets of interest groups from outside of this state. The railroads, the mines, it was terrible governance. And so when the founders of Arizona wrote our constitution, they gave us the right of recall in order to have a recourse for citizens to fight against corruption and malfeasance. That is what the recall is there intended for. If the founders of the state could see how a national interest group could cynically use this tool that was given to people of Arizona designed to protect us from the influence of outside interest groups, they would be deeply disappointed with this generation and the way we've used this right that we have. Now, the group that decided they wanted a redo, because no contention of corruption or malfeasance has been made, which is the reason the recall exists. But a group decided they wanted a redo on the election because they are rich and Julie is not, and they are depending on the silence of people who won't come to her defense. And they know that if they can get rid of Julie using their money and their influence, then they can go to any state legislature or city council around the state and say, "Do what we say or else." This is not a recall action, this is a hostile takeover. And the people of Mesa need to stay know and stand up for this good decent woman who has served this city. And I urge her council members to, not in official role, but you've worked alongside her, you know her heart, you know what she does for the good of this city. And so I urge you to find the courage to speak on her behalf. Where I grew up, when I see a woman being bullied, you come to her defense. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Kimball.
My name is Mark Kimball. I appreciate this opportunity to speak, Mayor Freeman, councilmembers. I'm in favor of the recall. Councilwoman Spillsbury was elected by conservative members of her district based on her campaign platform. Voters have been disenfranchised with her supporting and promoting ideology that is diametrically opposed to what she originally ran on. Voters and constituents feel betrayed. That's why this is a historic recall, never happened to this extent. And the previous gentleman to say that this is somehow not proper is false. That's why there's a recall opportunity for situations like this. She has made it clear that, as stated before, that she'll vote according to her conscience. But we have a republic, there's constituents to represent. We don't run for office just to support our feelings, it should represent the people. She has coincided with liberal, left, and supportive candidates that are so opposite of the conservative values of Mesa. I grew up here, 64 years. One of the things that makes this community great is the conservative values. And quite frankly, the recent presidential election, the majority of Americans have spoken out, "We want conservative values to guide our country." It's disappointing to see somebody that could be so promising to completely go in favor of a direction that was not what she ran on. And if she represented those things when she first ran, would she have been elected? I don't believe so. So I really encourage the council to proceed as fairly and efficiently with the recall process. It's a difficult thing, I agree with that. But I battle and speak in front of the Mesa School Board, and I have people say, "How did the school board get so liberal over the past four years?"
Thank you, Mr. Kimball, your time's up. Thank you very much. With that, Mary Maybano, if she'll come up, and following her, Jeremy Spillsbury, if you'll be on deck. Mary?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Mary Maybano, I'm at 6019 East Hobart Street in Mesa. God gave power to people by right to create government, therefore, all power in government is derived from "we, the people." Our representatives are servants or amenable, which means they're accountable, to the people at all times. This includes redress of grievances via petition recall. Under the Arizona State Law, ARS Title 19, Chapter 2, clearly states, "Every public officer holding an elective office is subject to a recall by the qualified electors in that district." The voters in District Two submitted the recall application, then the petition for recall was submitted for verification, and then the Maricopa County Recorder's Office verified the recall petition. All this was done properly and legally in accordance with Arizona law. And so I strongly urge a yes vote on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Spillsbury?
Before my time starts, can I get a little clarification on Mr. Smith?
Your time starts at three minutes.
Okay, well, I just want to, I was told that we're not supposed to talk in favor or against a candidate that's been occurring. Am I able to say positive things about a council member? Or is that, is that in violation of what you had said at the beginning?
You could say positive things. I hope you would.
Yeah, I will. We're, as I say, we're on good terms, so I'm grateful for the opportunity. So there's, I could speak at length why Councilmember Spillsbury is an excellent leader, but I want to focus on one specifically. I'm her husband, by the way, so, you know, I'm biased. But I want to speak to the issue that's most important to me. And so the most important thing, or the success of any organization, certainly a city, is determined by the ability of people to collaborate. And collaboration is a function of the quality of relationships that people working together have. And what, I went back and got a major in peace and conflict studies several years ago, and I learned that the root of all conflict, intractable conflict, is the violation of people's dignity. And one thing I admire and am so grateful for Councilmember Julie Spillsbury's leadership is that she leads out in being an example, that she treats people with dignity, with respect, and with compassion. And you can't get good policy, you can't get good results in an organization or a city if you can't foster those kinds of relationships. There's been a lot of talk about representative republic and what, you know, what those responsibilities are. There's a fundamental misunderstanding about what that means. Edmund Burke, he is considered the father of modern conservatism, said the following, and I had to change the pronouns to female. "Certainly, gentlemen, it ought to be the happiness and glory of a representative to live in the strictest union, the closest correspondence, and the most unreserved communication with his constituents. Their wishes ought to have great weight with her, their opinion high respect, their business unremitted attention. It is her duty to sacrifice her repose, her pleasures, her satisfactions to theirs, and above all, ever and in all cases, to prefer their interests to her own. But her unbiased opinion, her mature judgment, her enlightened conscience, she ought not to sacrifice to you, to any man or to any set of men living. These she does not derive from your pleasure, no, nor from the law and the constitution. They are a trust from providence, for the abuse of which she is deeply answerable. Your representative owes you, not her industry only, but her judgment, and she betrays instead of serving you if she sacrifices it to your opinion." I just want to leave. Baklav Havel, the first Democratic elected president after, in Czech Republic, said this, "Hope is not the certainty that things will turn out as you wish, hope is the conviction that there are things worth doing, no matter how they turn out." And thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, I'll have to spell her first name, A-L-A-Y-N-E, is that Alan or Elaine on East Palm, if you'll come forward, and after which, David Lane, you're on deck.
You did well, it's Elaine, thank you. My name is Elaine Favreau, and I am honored to speak today in opposition of the recall of Julie Spillsbury. I feel that this recall is a waste, a huge waste of time and money. Julie was overwhelmingly elected to the city council, I think those wishes need to be honored. Julie genuinely cares about all the people of Mesa, she wants the best for Mesa, she has the mindset of principle over party. Julie is a woman of integrity and decency, she acts and speaks with kindness and compassion. Integrity, decency, kindness, and compassion, how I wish that all of our leaders would act with those things. Macy is lucky to have her voice on the city council. We believe that the city council should be nonpartisan and that Julie speaks for all of us. And when I say all of us, I mean all of us, every constituent, not just conservatives. Mesa is very lucky to have Julie on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lane, following that, Nicole Laba, you're on deck.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is David Lane, I've lived in Mesa for about 40 years now. And I wanted to speak tonight, not necessarily about any individual, but I'm concerned about the reason for the recall and the fact that the city's spending a great deal of money to do that, just because of some issues. However, a lot of the issues I'm hearing raised by the recall people are partisan politic issues, and the city government is not a partisan organization. And I think it's really important that we make all measures to stay that way. Mrs. Spillsbury has the right, as anybody, any voter, to vote for whoever she pleases. Her vote for a presidential candidate or a candidate for Arizona Senate, or not Arizona, to represent Arizona in the Senate, is her vote, it is not the city's business how she votes for that. Another issue is that she voted on a modest pay increase for the council. It hasn't been that long where the city council did not get paid. And because of that, it limited the people who were, who could, in reality, serve and make the time commitment to do that. And so you found that the council was predominantly with wealthy individuals who could do that by having pay. By having pay, it opened it up to a wider demographic of people to, to represent the constituents here in Mesa. I'm just troubled, I, I believe that the council's hands are tied about whether or not this election goes forward. It's just a box-checking exercise, it appears to be. But I think it reflects that everybody on the council is, is, could be the next target for things that just don't, aren't part of the city's visit or business. And I'll have to stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Ms. Leba, followed by Jane McRae.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor, fellow community members. I came here not prepared to speak, but I come here as a very proud community member, and most importantly, as a mom. And for those of you that support this recall, you don't know Councilmember Spillsbury. You don't know that she not only has impacted her own community, but she has traveled to many districts, impacting all of us. And tonight, I have made the choice to take some time away from my family because I feel this is important. It's important that we have great people on our council, serving us. I believe she cares. I believe that, again, anybody that supports the recall does not know her, does not know her work. I support good people, and we all need to support good people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Ms. McRae, are you here? Jane McRae?
I just wanted to register her disagreement. She didn't want to speak.
Okay. Amy King, followed by Will Stasse. Amy, are you here?
I don't have a mark, but I did not mark what I wanted.
Gotcha, okay. Will Stasse, is that right? Will, thank you. After him would be Ron Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Will Stasse, in District 2. For the recall election in the city of Mesa, District 2, will the campaign signs for the election be in compliance with the display of signs in the SVT? There are specific compliance requirements for campaign signs under ARS 16-1019. Will the city of Mesa ensure compliance with marking utility right of way prior to excavation in compliance with ARS 40-360.21-32? You're allowed to look up the ARSs. If an individual is in violation of having signs in disrepair or encroaching on the pedestrian right of way, will the city of Mesa take action and enforce compliance? Does the city of Mesa understand that weather and rain affect, cause disrepair? The time period required for repair is 24 hours. How will the city of Mesa ensure compliance? If any individual fails to remove all signs at the end of the 15-day requirement, what action or how will City of Mesa enforce the Arizona revised statutes? Will City of Mesa remove signs on day 16 and send an invoice to the candidate for the cost and issue a fine? If the City of Mesa does not like the Arizona revised statutes, you can revise, amend the statutes. This is a comment period, not a question and answer period. Does the City of Mesa understand that noncompliance was excessive by all candidates in the 2024 election, and specifically District 2? And it appeared the City of Mesa did not take any action to ensure compliance. The Arizona revised statutes provides a requirement of issuing fines, that means a monetary dollar amount. Collecting fines is another issue. The law applies there, and if you violated the law in the past, take responsibility. We are all human, but when we make mistakes, we should ruin them. Some do not take responsibility. Does the City of Mesa have a 24/7 phone line to call for noncompliance? I thank you. And if I had one more comment, I love the signage outside your front door that says visitor entrance and council chamber entrance.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Williams, followed by Candace Hutchinson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Ron Williams. I'm a 30-plus-year Mesa resident, inducted into the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame, served in the military, United States Air Force during the Desert Storm era, business owner, run three different business development agencies in Arizona, resulted in $100 billion in contracts for Arizona businesses. Many of you know me from serving in the community. I chaired the Mesa Human Relations Advisory Board, I chaired the Mesa General Plan Advisory Committee that planned the city of Mesa through the year 2050. Obviously, my dog in this fight is the fact that what's coming to Mesa and, and in our community is, is very disturbing to me. This recall election is very disturbing to me. When I, I ran for city council in District 1, many of you know, a little less than half of the members in my district in District 1 voted for someone other than me, which is Councilmember Rich Adams, a friend of mine. And I will say that what I've seen happening in the city of Mesa with this recall, every mayor and city council member here, present and unpresent, should be concerned. Because at the end of the day, what are we talking about here? You know, I'm glad I'm a registered independent. When, when I, when it came close to the election and I was labeled as a DEI candidate, with all that, my service to this community, my race was over. It was a done deal. I've never been called a liberal in my life. I've been called a conservative. And all those labels, you know, this should not be a nonpartisan race. Let's take away this, this nonpartisan piece because it absolutely is not. And I'm just concerned for Mesa. That's my fight, that's my dog in this fight. I'm concerned for Mesa and I'm hoping that good people will do the right thing and let the people's vote be what it's gonna be. And this recall, I, I don't know where it's all going, but I will say that with this recall election, you can expect a whole lot more. Get ready, Mesa, you're gonna hear a whole lot more coming. Because when the people speak, and they don't, and their group that doesn't like it, watch out. Who's next? So my dog in this fight is that I hope that I can continue to feel comfortable living in the city of Mesa, owning my businesses at the airport, and, and be able to do what I do as a, as a citizen, and not as a label of something. I mean, you can look at me, you can see I'm African-American, but all the other stuff that gets thrown at me, I'm just amazed that, that this is happening in the city of Mesa. God bless all of you, Mayor. City Councilmember Julie Spillsbury, Councilmember Vice Mayor Summers, Councilmember Duff, Councilmember Rich Adams, my friend. God bless you all.
Thank you, Ron.
I'm Candace Hutchinson. Sorry, I don't cry unless it's embarrassing.
Join the crowd.
I just want to say that I'm very disturbed that we're here. Mesa is a very diverse city, and all of you have done nothing but make it safer for our families. I'm another mom who just came to support, had no intentions of speaking. I've been traveling with my family for the last four days, actually the last week, but four days. I haven't had a shower in three days because I had to go back to work today, and I would rather go home and take a shower. It is scary, the fact that we are having a recall election for the reasons that are stated. They are not valid reasons for a recall election. Everything that Julie has done has made us safer, has made us more connected to one another, has made us be able to know our neighbors and love our neighbors and take care of one another. And that is why it is so scary for us to be here at this moment. And I hope that everyone's opinion is heard here, that everyone understands that in the end, we need to do what is right. And so I wanted to take this time to thank you all, and to say that I reject the reasons for a recall election. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Unless I've missed anyone, that's the, all my blue cards that I have. With that, any council member wish to speak?
I wrote down a statement so that I don't get lost in my thoughts, but my heart is really full tonight, looking out at this room, and here we go. Tonight, as part of my duty as a council member and in accordance with state statute, I am required to vote to call for a special election. I want to take a moment to address the situation directly and transparently. Let me be clear, I do not support the purpose behind this recall. It does not serve the public good, and I strongly disagree with the premise on which it was initiated. However, I will be voting yes, not because I support the recall effort, but because I took an oath to uphold the law and follow the legal process. This vote is not a judgment of merit on the recall itself, it is a fulfillment of my responsibility as a public servant. For nearly five years, I have had the honor of serving this community as your elected council member. I have worked hard with passion, honesty, and integrity, and I am so proud of what we have accomplished together. You have trusted me enough to elect me twice, each time by wide margins, and I am grateful for your continued support. Unfortunately, a special interest group, according to all of the flyers they passed out, funded by out-of-state, dark money, and relying on paid petition gatherers, has now launched a recall against me. Let's be honest about what's happening. This is not a response to misconduct or malfeasance. Recalls are meant to protect the public from elected officials who have committed serious ethical or legal violations. That is not the case here. Last July, I won my reelection by 65 to 35%. If my constituents were not happy with me, this would have been the time to vote me out. That's how this works. Now, rather than accept the will of Mesa voters, they are trying to overturn the outcome and are willing to spend hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars to do it. This was anything but a local effort. Over two-thirds of the petitions were circulated by non-Mesa residents. In fact, of the top 15 petition gatherers, 11 were not Mesa residents. Not only were they not residents of District 2, they weren't even residents of Mesa. No one in Mesa should be okay with this. The recall petition itself cites three votes that I have taken during my time on council. Two of those votes were unanimous, seven to zero, including support from Mayor Mark Freeman. The third vote provided funding for emergency shelter, offering safety and stability to homeless survivors of domestic violence, children, and veterans. That is a vote that I will not apologize for. I will always support Mesa's most vulnerable. I know that no elected official can please everyone. Boy, do I know it. That is part of public service, but I have consistently listened to your input. I've studied each issue with care, and I have voted based on what I truly believe is the best interest of our entire community. I have shown up, I've done the work, and I have led with principle, even when it wasn't easy. And I will continue to show up. My door has always been open, and it still is. Whether you agree with me or not, I will meet with anyone who wants to talk to me. I believe that respectful dialogue makes our city stronger, and I am always willing to listen, to learn, and engage with our community. We are elected as nonpartisan council members. I take that so seriously. Picking up your trash and delivering clean water are not Republican or Democrat issues. We do not serve a party, we serve the people of Mesa.
Sir, 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 she has the podium.
That's how I've approached every vote, every decision, and every conversation, with the goal of doing what's right for our entire community, regardless of political affiliation. So while I have to vote tonight to call this special election to comply with the law, I want the public to know where I stand. I remain committed to serving Mesa with the same dedication, thoughtfulness, and respect for this community that I have brought to this role since day one. I appreciate your trust, your engagement, and your willingness to speak out. Thank you.
Any other council member wish to speak? Ms. Duff?
I just have a short statement because I feel very ill with the responsibility to approve this administrative action. I believe it is a waste of taxpayer dollars without just cause. Issues around partisan politics is outside the purview of city government, a nonpartisan body. We need to keep outside interests outside of local governance. We are not a conservative Mesa. We are not a liberal Mesa. Together, we are Mesa. We are diverse in thought, in culture, and ideas, and that makes us stronger. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Before, I, I have a couple of comments and a few things I'd like to say, but I'd first like to ask the city attorney a question, if I may. Mr. Smith, can you please, again, describe for me, because I don't remember the technical terms, what this vote is about and what our options really are according to Arizona revised statutes? Could you do that, please?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Adams. So, council many times acts in different regards. It can act in a legislative capacity where it has discretion, it can occasionally act in discretionary acts in which you have certain criteria, and then occasionally, there are some, very few cases in which council's acting in a ministerial type of action, and that's what this is. Under state statute, and it's 19-209, the statute actually has three shaws. It says that a recall election shall be issued within 15 days of a particular date. It goes on to say it shall be ordered to be held on the next following consolidated election, and then goes on to say a recall election shall be called for a city by the legislative body. And so this is, it's, it is required, you know, by the legislative body to call for the election once the, the preconditions have been met, which have been met, in fact, it's the first exhibit on the resolution, that there are the minimum number of signatures that have been, been qualified. And so the council's really acting in an administrative function or ministerial function in this regard, and by statute I just read, it is a requirement for council to move this forward for the recall.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate that. So I do have some remarks to make here and a few comments to make, but before I do, I want people to understand who I am and where I come from. I'm a conservative, been one all my life. Among other things, I was the only no vote at the Economic Development Advisory Board on the nondiscrimination ordinance, okay? I am not going to talk about party politics tonight, that's off the table. This is not a partisan issue here. This is a Mesa issue. Last week in his acceptance speech, our newly appointed chief of police, Dan Butler, said that the members of this, of this council are all unique and all different, but that we put our differences aside to come together to serve our community. He observed that we lead with our hearts and we put Mesa first. I couldn't agree with Chief Butler more about that, and I will tell you that Councilmember Spills- And I will tell you that Councilmember Spillsbury clearly leads with her heart and serves this community. I've observed it personally. This recall neither serves our community nor puts Mesa first. What the recall does is meet the requirements of Arizona revised statutes, which compels this council to call an election, as Mr. Smith just outlined. I don't like it, nor do I support it. But I believe in the rule of law, and Arizona law allows its citizens to recall elected officials for any reason or no reason. It's a fundamental right. Curiosity led me to personally examine the recall petitions turned in by the self-described grassroots effort. I found that approximately 20% of these were gathered by paid circulators. Perfectly legal, perfectly legal. Many people who run for office do this. Additionally, my observation, not scientific, but I leafed through all those pages, was that about 40% were gathered by volunteers who live in the following communities. Please bear with me here. Morana, Surprise, Glendale, Pine, Scottsdale, Tempe, Phoenix, Chandler, Tolleson, Apache Junction, Queen Creek, Sun City Fountain Hills, and Tucson. The old pueblo got to play here, too. So Mesa's grassroots apparently cover a lot of territory. I'm not making any suggestion here, but it sounds a little disingenuous to me. I've read the things the petition circulators cite as reasons for this recall. None of these things are violations of Councilmember Spillsbury's oath. I took the same one along with her and Councilmember Horetia a few months ago. I know what it says. "I do believe that she has been targeted with the intent to make an example of her for breaking political ranks." She didn't toe the line. That's what this is about, and speakers have confirmed that. I do not agree with every position or opinion Councilmember Spillsbury has expressed over the course of her time in office. That's a good thing. Debate is how we achieve consensus in America. That's how all voices are heard and considered. It's through the furnace of debate that ideas are annealed into policies that work for the majority. Nobody gets to have it their way exclusively. It takes courage to break ranks. It takes courage to speak your mind when you know it's not consistent with the party line. While I disagree with some of her, excuse me, positions, I admire her courage and honesty of conviction. Councilmember Spillsbury won her race last September by a 66 to 34% margin. All the things that made her the target of this recall were known at that time. All the things that have been cited on this petition were known at that time. And what we're referring to here now is a political issue outside of Mesa. Yet here, we find ourselves forced to spend over $200,000 on this election. I wonder how those who would question our overall spending feel about that. And I will close with this. When I was a kid growing up here, the Mesa Tribune below its banner had a quote, and it was there for years. And it was, I'll probably botch the quote, but it said, "I do not agree with the word you have said, but I will defend to the death your right to say it." And I think it was Voltaire or somebody like that. I believed it then, I still believe it now. I don't agree with everything that she's done or said or stood for, but this is not good for Mesa.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Thank you. Council, entertain a motion to move forward with this. Item 5C, is there a motion?
It's moved.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Is there a second? Are we going to start over?
Yes, please. Sorry, I hit the button too fast.
Okay, motion by Mr. Summers. I need a second.
Yeah, the technology's way better.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Please cast your vote. Motion moves forward with Mr. Horetia and Ms. Goforth absent. Thank you. Those, if you want to stay, you can. We have a couple more items on the agenda to hear. But if you want to leave, you can. Next, we'll hear. Item 8D is off the consent agenda, and that involves Medina Station zoning case 25-00208. We have one request to speak. Ms. Sharman, Pullman. Sharman, you have three minutes. If you could quietly, respectfully leave, I appreciate it. Go ahead. We can hear you fine.
Good evening, Mayor. Freeman and councilmen and women of the different districts. I am a resident of Mesa for three generations, and I know many of you. I went to school with many of you. I wanted to thank for this 8D. I live out at Signal Butte in Guadalupe. And sometimes my residents out there feel like that we are not part of Mesa. We are kind of like empty, kind of way out there towards Apache Junction. And I appreciate that the growth is going out towards East Mesa. But being a Mesa resident for so many years, I've seen Freeman Crop Farms, and I've seen other farms that have been taken over by buildings. And as much as I want the East Valley to grow, I just ask to be careful that we don't overgrow and become like LA. And being out there, I moved out there to see the mountains of superstition, mountains and all the other mountains. And I'm kind of like on both. I'm excited to have Target and some of the others going out there so we can, and Better Roads. But I also ask that, please, don't take Mesa away from those that have lived here for years, to not overbuild and not have a lot of other data centers. And so anyway, thank you very much. Mesa is the greatest.
Thank you, Sharman. Any council wish to speak on 8D? Any council mayor wish to speak on 8D? If not, I'll entertain a motion to move it forward. Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Please cast your vote. Okay, motion passes unanimously with Mr. Horetia and Ms. Goforth absent. With that, we're going to move over to item 8H regarding data centers. And that is 25-0566. Again, Mary Mabino, can you come forward? Mary, are you here? You're speaking, as well as Tom Maples is on deck. Mary, hello again.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, council members. She said, "I'm Mary Mabino, and I'm off of Gilt, um, Rucker and Brown Road." I'm, I am speaking to urge a yes vote on the data center agenda. I was shocked to learn in last week's city council meeting, Mesa has 15 data centers, 25% of our state's total of 60. I'm concerned because I know data centers use a tremendous amount of water and electricity to operate and, which contributes to our water shortage problem and can create a very probable negative environmental and quality of life impact. I also know certain states have already closed the door to more data centers, and I think it's wise to consider if Mesa has enough. Aside from the fact, data centers create noise, heat, and they employ less people than other businesses. And aside from the fact, surrounding neighbors clamor for much-needed retail, entertainment, and dining options, and instead see their home values decrease. My question is, would you like to be living right next to an ugly mammoth-sized data center and see your property values drop when that was not the original zoning intent? Perhaps it's time to put a moratorium on future data centers. I'm sure the developers and the lawyers they hire all live in super-nice houses in lovely neighborhoods far, far away from these visual concrete jungle eyesores. At the very least, these data centers need more regulations and scrutiny. And so again, I urge a yes vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Maples? Tom?
Thank you. Tom Maples here, representing the Arizona Chapter of 7 by 24 Exchange and our 60 members that are the Data Center Development Group. And so we are asking for improvements and to complete the hard work that has been done so far. I thank the staff, Planning Commission, and the council for all the hard work. Couple weeks ago, I raised several issues. There have been some improvements and clarifications. As I said one week ago, that process didn't complete. Eight days ago, I met with staff. They said they stood by their work and that it was up to the city council. Asking you to correct several issues, and I understand where this is going to go, that it's going to get approved. The people that are not objecting are the, in the development community, are the people that are going to still be able to develop their data center under the current rules. The people that are being grandfathered are okay with this. I'm here to speak to you about the next one to two to 10 years as the next data centers would be developed under the new guidelines that you would have, under the new zoning that you would have. And it would be asking, why didn't we finish the job? Why didn't we fix things? There's talk about, what's the threshold for an accessory use? What does that mean? What is a data center? Just a point of information. This was modeled on Phoenix. Phoenix, last week, in their final approved version, moved from 10% to 25%. I spoke last week here. 10% is going to cripple your attempt at advanced manufacturing. Simple number to change. Phoenix changed that number last week. Why not approve the same screening at a substation as in the MEP yard? Why in an MEP yard do you proclaim too much specific answers? "It shall be a solid masonry wall." You guys don't care whether it's a solid masonry wall. There's a part of the section, lots of changes, a lot of improvement, a lot of discussion, really well-written. I didn't write it. It's great. I think the utility company helped you on how to make screening. But we can't use that same screening for the cooling equipment or the generator yard. And finally, there's two different sections. There's a section that says all of the rules that everyone has worked really hard at on what can you do near a residential area. And there shall be a separation, and there's a screening, and there's a noise study. And there's a whole section that's well-written. Do I love it? No, but it's well-written. And then there's another section that has a sentence that says, "shall not be adjacent to the residential." All the hard work went into, what are the rules for a data center that's next to a residential? And then in F8B, it says, "You can't have it adjacent to a residential." So I'd ask you just to be consistent. Use and adopt all the hard work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maples. Ms. Brown, do you want to respond to any of his comments?
Thank you, Mayor and council. So I think we heard these comments last week, so I'll repeat what I talked about last week, and then Rachel is here this week, so she could add anything to it. As it turns out about new data centers coming in, that's actually the purpose of these regulations, is to make sure that as they come into the city that we're minimizing the impacts aesthetically and to those sensitive receptors such as residential uses. With the 10% being low in terms of the accessory use, again, we changed that now. It's based on the gross footage of all of the buildings on site, not just a building. So that actually will end up changing the amount of accessory use that you're using to store the data for your business. In addition to that, that also, I believe, mirrors Chandler. And Rachel, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. With the screening with the MEP yards, what we're trying to do is we're trying to keep those uses and those requirements for operations of the data centers as far away from the residential uses or those sensitive receptors, just because of the noise that comes out of those at times. That's why all of the different requirements for all of those different things about setbacks, separation requirements, walls, the location of the MEP, that's why they're included in the ordinance. They work together as a package, again, to protect those sensitive receptors.
Good. Thank you very much. Rachel, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Mayor, council, the only thing I would add is that for the accessory use for data centers, that was not based off of Phoenix proposed ordinance. That was actually based on existing ordinances for Chandler and for Morana. And at the time, it was consistent with what was being proposed for Phoenix and for Tempe.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to add that, you know, Mr. Maples, and you brought this up at a prior meeting, that we have 15 data centers in Mesa, Arizona, encompassing 1,500 acres of land, as well as 15 million acre, or square feet of data center. And so I think we've done our due diligence. 25% of all data centers are in Mesa, Arizona. We like to diversify. We're not saying no to data centers. We're just putting some other zoning restrictions on there to help them be south of the 24. So Mesa still welcomes data centers. So with that, I don't know if council, you want to bring up anything? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment. There was a gentleman that spoke last week. I don't think he was here. And what, one of the things that he said was that the data center industry has changed considerably over the years. And I could not agree more. One of the first data centers, I believe, that came to this location was a company, and I probably shouldn't call them out, but I will, Comarc. Comarc is located at Ellsworth, just south of the power lines. And when you pass by it, you don't even notice it, really. It's, it looks like a small office building. It's actually a very small footprint. But look what's been built more recently. 95-foot-tall buildings. Huge footprints, if they're not that tall. There's one data center that looks like an inside-out animal because of the electrical, the cooling towers, everything that, the generators are all on the outside of the building along either, along residential areas or our major arterial streets. What used to be a small business has become really an industrial use. So what Mary and Nana and their team has done has taken data centers and recognized their use and their importance to our economy and put together some very objective standards on how we live together. There was an article, an opinion piece that just came out now, maybe this weekend, on the West Side. And it was a complaint about aircraft noise out of Luke Air Force Base. An air force base that has been there since 1941, well before the houses were built, right? And here's an important aviation and defense industry that we should protect from the encroachment of residential areas. And on the other hand, too, we should also protect our residential areas against encroachment of heavy industry. Someone once said that walls make good neighbors. Well, good zoning makes good neighbors, too. I was part of the discussions and eventual adoption of the Gateway Strategic Plan, which was live, work, play, restaurants. It's a grand vision with a lot of work to do. And we deserve to see that vision come to fruition with a diverse economy, places to eat, great places to live. I think this ordinance is the first step in a number of newly-designed, more objective design standards for business, industry, and residential. That will improve Mesa. So with that, Mayor, I hope that we adopt this, and I'll make a motion for its passage.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there? We do now.
He can still speak, can't he?
Does somebody wish to speak? Mr. Adams? No, you can't.
Okay. No, I, I wanted to basically say what's already been said, but yeah, I think some of the messaging out there has, has hurt this, that we're anti-data center, and we are not, as, as we have shown by our actions. So I, I've listened and read all the emails and any of the opposition towards this as well, and I appreciate all their feedback. But I do think it's important to just reiterate again and again that how, that we have 25% of Arizona's data centers are in Mesa. So we've, we have done our fair share, and we, we are handling this very responsibly, and I'm grateful for, for the work the staff's put into make sure, make this all come out and work with all of the various voices on this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Philzberg. Mr. Butler, would you like to, manager, weigh in at all?
Well, Mayor, I think we've certainly, in the course of the discussion over the last month about this and at council study session, you know, we've really stated the position that the city council and city staff have approached this with. Two things can be true at the same time, one of which is we respect the role of data centers, we have recruited data centers, we understand in our economy the importance of data centers. But equally true is the impact that data centers have on our ability to utilize our, our land use, especially in southeast Mesa, for the highest and best use to attract high-quality, high-wage jobs. We've done our part in Mesa for the industry. And as the mayor alluded to, we, we're not restricting the industry. There are areas of Mesa that are more compatible now for this use, while we can reserve our line industrial areas for those job creation companies that we are actively recruiting and actively working to bring those high-wage, high-quality jobs to Mesa. And so it's, you know, it's disappointing when we have worked so closely with the industry for so long to be characterized that just because now we've run up to this area where, again, one community having 25% of the data centers for the entire state with still more underdevelopment that will be grandfathered in under this, under this respecting their property rights, of course, then, you know, we're being, we're being chastised as anti-data center, and, and that's just simply not the case. But we, we do know that this is a big state. This is a, a big southeast valley. There are other opportunities to cite these, these locations. I, you know, I've jokingly said, I, you know, I have three kids. I don't want a fourth. That doesn't mean I hate kids. And so this is exactly what we're saying. We, we respect and appreciate those data centers, and some are very good community partners. And, you know, I would like to point that out. They are, they are wonderful contributors to our community, but it's time to share the wealth with some of our other neighboring communities and also allow those to be cited in, in heavy industrial or more appropriate land uses so that we can reserve that remaining space for those high-quality jobs that the vice mayor's been pushing for, for a very long time.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
It's nice to have a city manager with a sense of humor.
Well, we know what he doesn't want. Mr. Adams?
I, I fouled up pushing the buttons here, so I thought I would make a comment. You know, I'm, I'm casting back on my experience on our Economic Development Advisory Board, and certainly there was a time when we felt very fortunate to be able to attract data centers. And I agree with what's been said here earlier, having 25% of the state's data centers is, is probably getting to a point of saturation, if not already there. One of my concerns has been, as this conversation has gone on, is we know data centers take an enormous amount of electrical power. Some of them have evolved to the point where their water use is less than what it may have been five, 10 years ago. They're getting more efficient, but let's just focus on the electrical power. If we commit a tremendous amount of power to one, two, or three data centers in the pipeline, now we have foreclosed the opportunity to attract other industries that may employ more people on the same square-footage footprint and generate more economic activity that way. So back in my Economic Development Advisory Board days, I probably never would have found myself saying, "No, no, enough." But I think, I think we've, on balance, I think we've gotten to the point where it's time to make sure we have opportunity for other employers, other industries. Things move so fast now, we don't, we don't know what's going to emerge in the next five to 10 years that might appear as attractive or more to Mesa. So I'm supportive of this, this action.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I'll entertain a motion for 25-0566, proposed amendments to Chapter 6, 7, 22, 31, 32, and 86 of Title 11. I think we have a motion by Vice Mayor, second by Ms. Duff. Please cast your votes. Passes unanimously with Mr. Reddy and Ms. Goforth absent. Thank you for that. Those who wish to leave, you can. We have three, not you, Vice Mayor. We, we have three blue card, says this president, Dennis Lyles. Dennis, if you'll come up and speak, if you're still here. Thank you, Dennis. And following him will be William and/or Gwen McCain. Sir?
Good evening, council members, and of course, Mayor Freeman. I'm Dennis Lyles. I live on Edgewood Avenue, right smack dab in the middle of District 2. I'm commenting tonight on response to some previous public comments, asking the city to cancel the 287G cooperation agreement with the Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. I think what some people are failing to grasp is that the 287G agreement centers around individuals are already in police custody, and it's used to keep criminals in jail until ICE can process them out of the country. I'm strongly against abandoning the agreement. I'm going to give you four reasons why. First reason, Lake and Riley, Athens, Georgia, killed by an illegal because there was no agreement in place. Reason two, Rachel Moren, based in, lived in Maryland, mother of five children. The illegal killed her at prior arrest, but no ICE detainer. Reason three, Jocelyn Nungary, 12-years-old, killed by two illegals who would have been out of the country if there would have been a ICE detainer. Reason four, Melissa Powell and her son, Riordan, killed by an illegal that had multiple DUIs, other felonies, but no, no ICE detainer. I would ask people advocating to cancel the agreement, if they really want to expand the list and include Mesa, Arizona names, because this is exactly what could happen if that, if that's happened. The last point I'd like to make is that pure research back in March did a study, and there was, Republicans and Democrats, and 97% of them, of both Republicans, Democrats, wanted illegals, criminal illegals out of the country. Now, if you can get Republicans and Democrats to agree on something like that, you know it's a hot-button issue. So I'm putting my hopefully-not-misplaced faith in the city council that you'll never take up this, this, this type of amendment. So canceling the ICE agreement would be bad public policy and put it all, put us all at risk. So I'd like to thank you for your time tonight, and one other thing, please fix Greenfield Road. Thank you.
Well, that's the first. We had a road gathers and applause. McCain's, come forward, please.
Mr. Mayor, Mark, the council, thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm Bill McCain. This is Gwen McCain. We've been residents since 1977. I came over here to coach football and baseball in that year and have coached 43 years of football. So if some of the audience went to Mesa High, they may have been my students, but I'll let Gwen go ahead and start.
Okay. We are in our late 70s, and we've lived in the same house for 47 years, raised our six boys there, and we love Mesa. But we're kind of concerned with what's happening in our neighborhood, especially the house that is next door to us, that was sold January of 2024. And after it was sold, I noticed they were doing construction inside of the house. So I went inside, and when constructors, construction people were there, asked to see if I could see what's going on to this house, because it was a beautiful four-bedroom home, and noticed that they were, they made the front room into two bedrooms, the garage into, into two bedrooms, the patio into two bedrooms. So that means there's 10 bedrooms in there. And, and then after that was done, people started coming in and noticed that they were, these were all people that of different races, different ages, and mostly male, only saw about three female, but they are mostly male living in there now. There's always, there's never been less than nine cars that are parked on this street. Of course, they're parked okay, but never had less than that. And we live in a middle class. It's zoned as our one single-family home. We do have some duplexes that are part of it, too. And so we have seen cars from California, Nevada, New Mexico, and Arizona. And so we've been, this whole year, I, we have called compliance, and oh, man, this is, they told us, the guy, that we could, that there's only supposed to be five people that are not related, that can live in a single-family home, where we have 10 now. And I also want to mention that a lot of people park on their lawns in these duplexes.
Thank you.
Thank you, McCain's. They're in District 1. I pass it over to, yeah, I pass it over to Councilmember Adams. The next card is Jared H. Is there a Jared here? I don't have a last name, so. Thank you, Jared. You have three minutes.
Well, you do get nervous when you're up here. And I'm actually used to talking to people. My last name is Heager. I, I'm a Mesa resident, and I'd like to speak on the 287G and a couple of other items that are sort of interrelated with it. I don't like violent criminals. I don't like, nobody wants to read about people being murdered, speaking of like the gentleman talking about Lake and Riley, and he mentioned a couple of other names. But if we start cherry-picking data as far as like, well, oh, well, this, this person murdered this person, this person murdered this person, and then generalize an entire population of people, what are we? The, the fact that ICE is snatching people and they're not getting due process, according to a Supreme Court decision, one of them was already required to be pulled back from C-COT all the way here, shouldn't have been sent there to begin with, he had no trial, no, no Fourth Amendment rights. And the fact that all it could take is something as simple as a clerical error when somebody is imprisoned, or I shouldn't say imprisoned, when they're, when they're arrested, then they're in jail and then the booking process. That person could wind up in C-COT or Alligator, whatever the hell we're calling it now, the concentration camp in Florida. And there's no reason that we should allow gaps like that to exist. ICE just got $150 billion. They don't need the police's help. That's more than the budget of the Marines. So why let them do their own research? Let them go through the courts like they should be doing and let these people get due process? If they're criminals, then yeah, they'll get, they'll get sent back to where they're from. If they're not, they should get a, well, depending on what they've been through, who knows? You had your chance. I, I'd like to bring up another point really quickly, related to the ICE raids all over town. I get notifications about them all the time. Why are they covering their faces, not showing warrants, not giving names? How do we know they're not just copycats like those in Tucson or showing up? I mean, it's a federal crime impersonating a police officer. Why would we, why would we not require them to show the same fidelity of the law? They should be, for starters, they could, they should not be able to wear a mask for, I got 15 seconds left. They shouldn't be able to wear a mask, they should have to state a badge number, they should have to show a judge, a warrant signed by a judge, and otherwise, how do we know we shouldn't call the police on them? And that's it.
Thank you, Jared. So Jared, thanks for your comments. For those that want additional information, we have one of our assistant chiefs in the back, Chief Rankin, if you raise your hand. You can reach out to him, and he can specifically answer some questions for you. Since it's not on the agenda, we cannot respond, but you're all aware of that. So with that, thank you. Moving forward, Ms. Mosley, do we have any others that wish to speak?
We do not have others that wish to speak, but I have a lot of cards that did not wish to speak. Do you want me to read them? That you wish to speak? Oh, and that, my staff did say everybody was throwing their cards at him, so it was really hard for him to organize them. So I do apologize if some of them are out of order. I'll double-check.
Give us a second. Let, let us go through and see.
Well, let me read these first, since I do know that these are all, "I do not wish to speak for oppose, opposing the ICE agreement." And that is Lori Thompson Tutu, Bob Pamplin, Michael Stanley, Carol Payne, and Cameron McFrad. I apologize if I ruined any of those names. And then we have, oh, we do have, I'll get to that. We have one that I see that is to speak.
So did I see like three or four hands go up that? One, two?
Well, let me just point out, this is for items from citizens present, so even though you may have wished to speak on this, which is what these are, we only allow three speakers for these, so that is probably the confusion for those. So, but I have three that they did not choose whether they opposed or support, but they were all about the 287, and that is Walter Von Campen, Antoinette Andrewsy, Julian Ryan, and Tony Makarana? I'm sorry. Okay, so maybe all three of those may have been opposed. And then I have, in support of the agreement, I have Sam, Emma, Tim Meyer, Richard Everhart, Ginger Von Camper, or Campen, I'm sorry, Jalen Woodward, Mary Maybino, Sherry Walton, Jeff Franklin, Melody Whitstone, Alex Vranchiki, Senator David Farnsworth, Joanne Robins.
Okay.
And yes, those are all in support. And then I, I do have two other cards that were for items from citizens present with different categories, different subjects. One was CFDs, and one was to remove the ML King signs.
Thank you. All right, we've heard from our three citizens present, so move, did you read, Ms. Mendoza was your name read?
The, all the comments that were submitted online for 287G, which is not an agenda item, were submitted to the council on a report this afternoon.
So we have that.
And they're published online, I'm sorry. They are published online as well.
We have a lot of speakers to speak tonight, but otherwise, we will be done with that portion of Item 10. Sorry about that, not getting to everybody's request. With that, these are all the items we have for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Vice Mayor. Ms. Philzberg, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.